I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our September 24th, 2019 Tiverton School Committee meeting. I ask for, has anyone signed up for open forum? Okay. I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion, please.
All those in favor? Dr. Sankiony?
I'm the first one actually. I'm a point on recess here for a while. I'm trying to have to say, say you. Stagnant positions being supervisor of the high school, Kristen Orset, and the department newspaper club advisor. I have the middle school, Paulie, the contact teacher, the high school volunteer, and responsible mention. I have major and toll. Also under consent agenda, I have two schools.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to ask for a motion to move up item 11A, consideration of solar contract.
Second it.
All those in favor? So, just by way of background, we've been discussing over the last couple of meetings, joining with the town in a solar contract. I don't know if Dr. Sankiony, you have any other sort of prefatory remarks, but we welcome our town manager and Mr. Raduka from the solar company. And actually, Jan, what we're really looking, yeah, yeah, please come. We sort of wanted to hear your valuable insight and sort of opinion and recommendations about the contract.
I can keep that short and sweet, I think. I think there's a tremendous opportunity both for the town and the school department. Town council decided to take advantage of it. To me, it's sort of a no-brainer that the opportunity has been created by state law and by the state, both policy-wise and in terms of its programs, creating these incentives to promote solar and other renewable energy development. For us, it was a very easy option, so to speak, compared to having to find your own site, dealing with all the issues of that. This is rather simple. There's a company out there that wants to build the project, it's going to generate the energy, there are credits available, we split it with them, we basically have to do hardly anything, and we get a discount on our electricity bill. So, obviously, there is always the need to do some fair amount of due diligence, which we did, and to be very careful in how you write the contract. Although, with respect to contracts, I will say that, you know, by now, there is a fair amount of track record in terms of writing these contracts, plus that in this state, the Office of Energy Resources has been very helpful in terms of vetting that kind of thing and also assisting off-takers, municipalities, and they would assist the school department as well if there's any need for that. So, I look at it as, in and of itself, a great opportunity, and then when we went forward with this, I believe Kearsage was a little disappointed in the actual consumption that we had, because it was not as much as I think was originally anticipated, in part because the school department was not participating in that.
Mm-hmm.
Even so, we got a very competitive proposal from them in terms of the discount rate that they provide, and they actually upped it after we went through evaluation of various proposals that we got. And then if, in fact, the school department or school committee decides to join this effort, the rate will become even more favorable to us. So, there would be an additional benefit to the town, I think, as well as to the schools.
Now, the town has actually already signed a contract, correct?
Correct. We did it in May.
Okay. And do you know if that contract would need to be joined or modified by the school, or do we, would we need to create a new contract?
I'm actually not entirely sure about that. I've asked that question myself, and I've sort of, you know, left it up to what comes out of the discussions between Kearsage and the school department. We're certainly willing to consider if there needs to be a modification of our contract, if only to reflect that we're getting a better rate. We can do that, obviously, but I'm not sure that there is any significant modification necessary to accommodate the school department. It all depends, and I don't know, Paul can probably answer it a little bit better, what specifically the mechanism would be.
Okay. I want to give everybody a chance to sort of ask other questions, too, first. So, toward that end, Mrs. Black, any questions for Mr. Reitzman?
Yes, first of all, thank you so much for coming.
My pleasure.
We should do this more, working together, and I was reading through the bids and proposals that you had written up. It's quite, very extensive, how you went through it, and I really appreciate that. And as we look through everything, we'll have to look at the numbers and everything. We asked them why we couldn't get a little more, of course, we had to try to do that, you know, last week.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time understanding.
We asked them how we could get a little more.
I'm getting old, so I have a hard time understanding.
We asked them how we could get a little more, but, of course, we had to do that, but I guess it's reasonable, and, you know, I think it's, it sounds good.
As I understand it, compared to, you know, other projects, this is a very competitive rate.
And I'm glad it's off-site, since we have brand-new roofs, we'd have to, we didn't want to touch our beautiful roofs, you know, so this way we don't have to do, get involved in that. That's good.
I do hope we'll see more roof installations as well in this town, because I think that's, that's another big opportunity we haven't taken care of yet, but...
Yeah, that's good, though. Thank you, thank you for including us.
You're very welcome.
Mrs. Paver?
No, I think you've, you have done a good job.
Thank you.
In the research, please.
It's fine work.
I will reiterate our thanks for you joining us this evening. I know this is night number two for you. I guess...
It's nothing compared to budget season.
You beat me to the punch.
No. And we promise we'll have you out of here long before 10:00.
Thank you.
And 10:00's keeping it light, I know, that's a good one. One of the reasons I was hoping maybe that you, you could come visit us and talk to us, I'd like to know how Kearsage came to the top of your recommendation list. I know you put out an RFP, and you did receive several, and what was, what was the process? How did you come to the decision?
Okay, so, we took some time developing an RFP and making sure that, you know, the key requirements were in there, and first of all, that we had to go along a learning curve in terms of how this is work, and how do we know that we have an RFP that we understand, so that we could actually evaluate it. Then we had the proposals, and I think we only eliminated one of the proponents, because basically all the proposals were responsive, so to speak. There were some criteria that I think came to the fore right in the beginning. One was that we were really looking for some actual long-term stake in this project, instead of having the model where essentially have an investment entity that develops it and then flips it, so to speak. And to me, that was not the best way to go, if we had a different option. And actually, one of the criteria where Kearsage really came to the top for me was just that, is being committed to, for the long term, to stick with the project and not just to sell it off and be gone and go to, to other places. I know of Kearsage as having quite a bit of local presence and, and activity. We actually had discussions, I had discussions with Paul, because I happened to know him as someone who has quite a long experience in this area, from when I worked in the governor's office, so I basically picked his brain about how does this really work, and, you know, what is your experience so far, what do we need to look out for, and then we had to stop that, because they became one of the proponents. But it was very helpful to have that. We used several criteria. I don't know if you've received, I think I shared some of that information with, with Mr. Crowley, and what was the other one? Oh, obviously, the rate is ultimately sort of the bottom-line piece, and what complicated that particular picture is, it all depends on what term you're looking at. Twenty-five, 20 years, 25 years, 30 years. The longer the term, the better rate you can get. I felt, as did the council, that at this time, we're still relatively speaking in the beginning of this type of development and industry, and that 20 years was long enough to, to take a gamble on, and it's not that much of a gamble, really, but 20 years is a long period. And I think by now, we get more and more track record of the industry, maybe people are beginning to feel more comfortable with 25 or 30 years, but I thought that 20 years was really, for us, the better way to go. And in that particular context, Kearsage actually proposed the, the best term. There were, among the other proponents, higher discount rates for 25- or 30-year terms, but actually, Kearsage then decided to make up for that difference as well, which is how we went from, I believe, 25% to 28%. So, on balance, knowing of their track record, knowing of their commitment to stick with the project and, and be here, instead of you have to chase them, you don't know where, as well as, I think, very important, maybe not so much from the immediate fiscal perspective, but certainly from an environmental perspective, which is the commitment to focus on those sites where you don't have to cut down a whole lot of trees, or pave over farms, or things like that, but focusing on brownfields, on, you know, former landfills, on industrial sites that have already been disturbed, so you don't have to, you know, sacrifice resources that are otherwise just as important to the community.
That's good, yeah. You mentioned 20 years. I was under the impression that town was in a 25-year contract.
I'm looking for the, yeah, I'm looking for the term.
Did we go to 25?
Wasn't it 25?
Oh, maybe we did, I don't know. I, I thought it was 20, at least in the beginning, that's how...
I don't have it open right now, but I did read through.
I'm trying to find it, and I can't find it in my documents.
Actually, I think you may be right, because I was just going, and this has been several months now, as I was going through it, I looked at some of the tables, I said, did we go to 25? It may well be the case.
I mean, to be honest with you, it was the, probably the single biggest reason that we decided to step back and take our time, because of the length of the contract.
Mm-hmm.
So...
25 years.
Okay.
It's 25.
It is 25, I thought so.
I think there is a term in the contract for 25 years, if I'm not mistaken, but I thought that the, the idea was that we had 20 years, which then could be extended up to a certain amount of time.
Okay.
I can quickly check it.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that it?
That's my only questions, thank you.
It is 25.
It's 25.
Apologies for confusing you.
So, I have one really sort of general question, which is, in reviewing all of these proposals, and in this one in particular, what was the downside that you saw? Was there a, is there anything that kind of you thought, huh, that's something we'll need to be careful of or watch out for, or you didn't like so much about this proposal? Because I was looking for something, I really couldn't come up with something on my own. I was wondering if you had something that you...
I really did not, and that is my honest answer to that. I could not necessarily say the same thing for every one of the proposals, but for this particular proposal, I really didn't see a downside, at least not, you know, I mean, there's always some uncertainty in this type of a project, and still a relatively new industry, but I think it's well worth taking, and with the terms that we have, I think it's a safe, safe bet, so to speak.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Do you have any other? Paul?
Yeah, I guess I could add a few more comments on there. As far as the contract, and it can go either way, where we just do another contract with the school district, with your accounts and the exhibits, basically using the exact same contract.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, or, we have to check, but we could just amend the other contract, and literally what it is, is in the exhibits, it lists all the accounts, we just literally would go in and change what those accounts are, and then the discount rate. And those are actually in the exhibits.
Okay.
They're not in the body of it, so you just go in and change those. So, those are the two options, either one that would work for, for both parties. We're very flexible in that. And, and I think Jan hit on, you know, all the criteria that we had. One of the things that came out, too, was that our structure of our deals, a lot of places either do a discount or a fixed rate, and with that discount, they put a floor in, that if the price drops, that's one thing that we did, we don't have, which, which was, I think advantageous, in that the, the 30% is 30% of whatever the energy price is, so if energy prices are up or down, it's always going to be along those lines. And as I said, it doesn't interfere with any third-party energy providers, if you're using a direct energy or whoever, it doesn't interfere on that side, because it's a dollar credit. And that's it. And, you know, the other one is that we are the long-term owners. We, we've funded over almost $300 million worth of projects. We own and operate them long-term. Our operations center is, is in our offices, and we monitor and, and do all the building and everything internally at our facility, so there's issues. I'm over in Bristol on Wood Street. Come get me. But we're responsive in that respect.
Okay.
Could I ask one more?
Sure.
Just to keep ourselves grounded on this, I had read an article that there were concerns over Narragansett Electric's ability to take in all this, have the infrastructure prepared to take in all the solar...
Mm-hmm.
...power.
Correct, yes.
What happens in the event that they cannot accommodate what you're sending?
Yeah, well, that's actually, because, I mean, what that comes to is, is more on the interconnections, and what's happened is, all our interconnections on our projects, we pay for all the upgrades to the, to the grid for anything that the solar affects. What could happen is that the upgrades are so costly that the project can't move forward because of those, of those upgrades. But they've put into place cost-sharing, so that if there's multiple projects on it, if the first person, what we refer to, that tips over the substation, doesn't have to pay the $2 million, they actually can share it with multiple people. The projects, though, that I have for here, are actually already been approved by National Grid, are moving forward, and those costs are there.
So, we wouldn't be subject to any of these cost shares?
They're not subject to that, yep, exactly. What's happened, you've probably heard in the industry right now, is the ISO has stepped in before, it's just National Grid working out the substations, and at one point, the ISO woke up and said, wait, there's a lot of solar overall, we need to start looking at the grid, and how is it affecting, and how are we managing that? But our industry pays for all those upgrades, and we're starting to manage it. As you see, the batteries that will be going in for the offshore wind, potentially off, over here in Fall River, that's actually helping manage the grid and stuff like that. And the wind projects have added a little bit of a kink to it under the FERC and, and ISO New England rules. So, it is a good statement, but these projects are a moving head that we have on, on there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. Any other questions on the part of the committee, or from the public, such as it is? All right, so I'm going to ask for a motion for our administration to draft a contract with Kearsage, and that's subject to the details, we'll take that up ultimately to...
Assistant. No, it's already, yeah.
The attorney.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, we'll, you know, in principle, approve the, the project. We need to draft the contract to actually have it final, you know, approved, and then sort of work out the details with how that articulates with the town contract. Yes, Mr. Reitzman?
I have one more thing.
Yeah?
I meant to mention that it was important to us to actually have the advantage of working with an expert attorney.
Yep.
Because I know what I don't know.
Yep.
And even though I have a legal background, certainly not in this, and we wanted to make sure we had someone who looked at it from, you know, our perspective, and was looking at, like what you asked, what are the things we need to watch out for? That was the role of this person, and so he basically subcontracted to the town solicitor and, and made sure that the, the contract was, was in order and beneficial to us, not just to the client, so...
So, who was that?
His name is Martin Gitlin. He actually is in Connecticut, so that was the other reason why he's really was engaged as a consultant, subbing to our town solicitor, because he can't practice law in here, but he had the expertise, he had worked on many of these types of agreements, and in the renewable energy sector in particular, so I felt it was very valuable, it was also very reasonable, and in fact, we got assistance in, in paying for it, so it was well worth it.
Got assistance from where?
I have the contact information, but I'm not supposed to advertise for people, but in case you want contact information, I can...
I'll ask Dr. Sankiony to give you a call.
Okay.
All right, so...
Yes, because that, we have to remember, we went through this once before, and we were, were going through everything, we had all information, it sounded wonderful, and then our attorney checked it out, and the references didn't come back, and we said no, and the town had said yes at the time, and it was, it was a mess. So, that's the only reason we're being really careful, because we've been through this once before.
On solar?
Yes.
When was that?
It was a while ago.
Okay.
It was, yeah.
Going back.
But it worked out all right.
Okay, it was more than six years ago, I can tell you that much, as far as I know, as far as I remember.
It worked out good.
So, anyway, so would someone like to make the motion to approve the project and...
I'll make that motion.
...instruct the administration to draft a contract?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Okay. So, thank you.
Thank you for coming before us multiple times.
Yes, thank you both.
You're off the hook for our next meeting.
If we can be helpful, let us know, okay?
Yeah, well, I'm sure we'll be in touch. So, I think we're going to table that, is that right?
Yes, I'd like to table item number 10. We're not ready for a second reading.
Is that a motion? All right, so we'll just table it, we don't need to vote on that, right? All right. And we're tabling 12A as well, I believe.
Right.
Yep. So, we're up to 12B, District's Vision, Mission, and Goals. Dr. Sankiony?
Great, thank you. Bring you up to the big screen. So, we're going to talk tonight about asking you to consider and maybe even approve district goals this evening, and I'll, and I'll get into the purposes behind that momentarily, but when we're thinking about the goals of the district, you certainly want to always have a vision lead that thinking, and here I'm sharing with you what we've sort of constructed as a vision to help us work here, and that is certainly to drive this district to be a premier educational institution, a source of pride for the community, have a lot of innovation, but most importantly, producing students prepared for post-secondary education, and to have students ready for post-secondary education, they have to process and move through our K-12 system and graduate. And that's certainly the goal for everyone who's attending our school system. So, when we went about the process of creating district goals, it provides an overview of the priorities and strategic actions for the Tiverton Public Schools. These priorities are driven by careful data analysis at the district, school, and classroom level. They are developed to promote the achievement of our students while aligning and facilitating school improvement plans along with teacher goals. When our goals are aligned, the district can move forward with strategic budgeting, professional development, hiring, and other core actions. So, in essence, what I'm trying to say there is, the district goals drive the school improvement plans that you'll see in two weeks, and the school improvement plans drive the goals that our teachers write in the teacher evaluation system. So, when the district becomes aligned like that, then we can target budgeting, we can target professional development, and we can target hiring, and all our actions are flowing on, on the same page, and that's ultimately what you want from a successful school district. So, the district goals drive all that, which is why we certainly want you to be approval, approval of this, and certainly to understand it at a high level. So, we've got some goals articulated here, the first one being that the school committee will be provided a strategic plan regarding the one-to-one laptop program in grades 5 to 12, to be used in a blended learning environment, and the iPads deployed in grades K through 4, used in an instructional rotational model. The plan includes publicity, procedures, safety, management, and the preparation of teachers, parents, and students. In the spring, we'll come back to you with an evaluation of that plan. So, to facilitate that, we've gone through a number of steps already. Most importantly, it began last year when we upgraded the infrastructure of all five of our schools, so both the safety and security of our internet, but empowering our internet to encompass many devices at once without failure. Second most important step we've taken is the training of our staff. So, the first two days in August this year, our first early release day, have all been targeted toward blended learning, which is in essence, using technology in a classroom to advance student achievement. So, we know that when our staff is trained, when our staff is empowered, when our staff is confident, we can move to that last step, which is issuing a Chromebook to all of our students, grades 5 through 12. Right now, we're targeting that to take place sometime this December. The last couple steps we need to have in place is the approval of some policies we're going to bring forward to you on a first reading on October 8th. We need to have meetings with all of our parents, to have them informed of this plan, and we're going to conduct many parent sessions around this, and we need to have meetings with our students, which our principals will conduct, around the purpose, reason, rationale behind moving toward a digital conversion and using technology in all of our classrooms. So, I'll continue to move through the goals, and then certainly we can come back and delve into any one that you feel you have some questions on. But to help give you a closer look at a one-to-one, I'd like to show you a video, which is another district's one-to-one plan, but it certainly mirrors what we're going to try to accomplish here in Tiverton.
So, this was the first year of the one-to-one initiative, and it enabled every kid across our school to have a device, a Chromebook mainly, that they could use in every class and take home, which was huge for us, because we were splitting multiple carts across the entire school, and if they weren't available, then I couldn't use technology that day.
What we wanted to happen is make sure that every student had a Chromebook that they could use during the school day, take with them, and also be able to take the Chromebook home with them in the evening. This gives them a chance to always have technology at school whenever they need it.
It's really easy to, like, reach out to teachers now, like, if you didn't understand something at home, like with math, if you wanted to go, ask, email your teacher or something, you couldn't do that with four computers. So, it's really helped my grades and everybody else's grades.
Since we can take it home, it gives us more time to work on our work, and instead of, like, trying to catch up and go have time, carry it on with you, and you take the work wherever you go. So, you really have to be very responsible with, like, keeping up with...
Biggest part that I love about it is teaching kids how to be lifelong learners, and that's because a couple of years ago, when I didn't have that, even though some of them have cellular devices, but now that they all have a device, it's an even playing field, I can teach them that in class. So, if there's something they don't know, I've helped them learn how to use resources like Khan Academy, so it's teaching them that they can learn beyond me and my classroom.
We should think of it as the norm, because as students move on to high school and college or to their careers, where, whatever path they choose, that's how the world works, like, we always have technology. So, the quicker, the earlier they can get used to having that technology and using it, the better off they're going to be in the long run.
So, it's a mediocre video at best, but, you know, the good thing about that is when we come back to you in the spring, the video we will show you, that Ms. Delcourt will produce, will be of fine quality, and certainly will highlight the success that we've had throughout the school year. The second goal that we're working on is the implementation of Witten Wisdom, and that's our K-8 literacy program. When we evaluate this, we're going to look at it with, that all our teachers implement it with fidelity, and that's going to be evidenced by the completion of grade-level common assessments, classroom walk-throughs by our principals and our administration, and a review of the pacing guides. So, to facilitate this, when we first come back, and again, thank the committee for the work that many of our teachers and administrators did in the past, of vetting all the English Language Arts curriculums that are out there, and leading us to the choice of Witten Wisdom, which was rated one of the highest by, by a group out there who does that type of work. And so, it required a substantial financial investment by the school committee, and I want to remind you of that decision you made, and again, compliment you on that decision, because it was important to make sure we finally have a curriculum that aligns all of our teachers, and all of our schools, and all of our grades, to in fact, teach literacy the same way. So, the training began with our teachers, again, in this program in, in August, they've already had two full days of training, they've started implementing it in all of our classrooms, K through 8. They had training again on our first early release day, and the thing that's going to make sure that this program is implemented with fidelity is, the training continues on every early release day throughout the year. So, we're making sure that our teachers are well-supported, we know that's a key to success of any curriculum implementation. So, those things are all in place. Again, I compliment the committee on allowing us to put in place some elementary instructional leaders, so now we have a teacher leading the grade level at each level, K through 4, and those teachers then get to work with their colleagues on the implementation of Witten Wisdom, making sure it's done with fidelity, and are going to look at those common assessments and look at that data then to inform instruction. So, all the structure is there to make sure this is a very successful endeavor on the part of the Tiverton Public Schools. Our third goal is to take a closer look, and I wouldn't say that, yeah, let me preface this goal by saying, I don't believe the Tiverton Public Schools has a serious issue with bullying, certainly the data doesn't suggest that, but in any K-12 system, there is bullying that takes place, and we want to make sure we have a strategic plan to deal with that, and really clearly articulate that to both... articulate that to both parents, teachers here in the district, and anyone who's coming into our district, or how in fact we're going to deal with that. So it's prevention and intervention, and I want to highlight the prevention part because we know if the prevention part is strong, then we're not going to be intervening in issues that are taking place. So there's a lot that's going to go into this plan. I want to highlight one portion of it now for you. If, there he is, he's over there hiding. We've already put in place an online reporting form that we've trained both our middle school and our high school students to use. So while we're coming up, just so you know, the genesis behind this form is in fact we know that 99% of the time, the research tells us that bullying does not happen in isolation. Other students know about it, other people know about it. We also know that a lot of time, reporting it doesn't always happen because the people who see it are in fear of being the bully's next victim. But in fact, if we can create a communication device and open up the minds of our children to be able to report it to us, in fact, then we can take place. So this form gets into bullying, and if you can see it up there, it has a lot of other things in there, talks about students who want to hurt themselves or hurt others. That information's critical to us. We know from other districts who've employed forms like this, this has been a godsend. I don't want to be melodramatic, but this type of informations allows us to intervene and potentially stop a person from hurting themselves or other, or helping students who are in need. So this is available right now, online on our webpage. We've already received a couple of reports. We know that students know it's there. We want to continue to encourage them, but this is just one part of a comprehensive bullying, prevention, and intervention plan. Wanted to share this with you this evening.
Do they have to be signed in somehow to?
Can be completely, completely anonymous. You're allowed to give us your name if you'd like and help sometimes so we could talk to you. However, we also know that some students wouldn't want to do that, or even community members or teachers. It's the information's what's important to us, not who signs it.
So are we going to roll this out to parents and the community as well?
We are. So this one is going, may sound like jargon to you, but professional learning communities, we are beginning the foray into this, and this sort of is the means to an end for us. This is how the training for Witten Wisdom and for blended learning takes place. It takes place in professional learning communities, and that simply means that we want to link the teachers who do the same job. We want all our K teachers to work together, we want all our biology teachers to work together, we want all our sixth grade math teachers to work together. In those courses, in our grade levels, then, we want you to have the same assessments. Because when we can look at assessment data, then we can look and say, okay, why are your students doing so well here? What did you do in that unit? What was the depth, the breadth that you taught it? What technology did you use? How did you get students engaged in this? When teachers can share that type of information, that's the greatest form of professional development we can offer. So we've begun this process now, the first early release day, we found we were able to have grade levels and/or departments, teachers who teach the same course sort of work together. And it's a long-term process, it takes a lot of time for people to build that trust, to build that confidence, to share things, to create assessments, and we're hopeful this year that if we could get every subject area, every grade level to do a couple common assessments and be able to look at that data collectively, we're setting a great foundation for moving forward with this in the future. So to give you a little more information on what a PLC is, I'm going to show you another quick video. And this is from an organization called Solution Tree, who are in essence the architects of professional learning communities. And we're actually bringing them into the district on November 18th. They're going to do leadership training for all department heads, all our grade-level leaders, all of our principals about leading PLCs so that we can empower our people to be well-prepared as we continue on this road.
The very first and the most important, again, of the big ideas is we have to break learning as a fundamental. So we make a shift away from our traditional focus on teaching to a focus on learning. One of our great friends and associates, Bart Johnson, he's superintendent in Sanger, California, puts it this way. He says, "Teaching without learning isn't teaching at all, it's just presenting." So is our focus on teaching or is our focus on learning in the classroom? If we miss it, that learning is our fundamental purpose, then the conversations within our schools would be very specific, and they would shift away from that traditional focus of a teacher sitting in a classroom, looking at the lesson planning document, trying to decide, what am I going to teach? How will I teach it? How much time will I spend? What materials do I use to teach it? That conversation shifts away from the individual teacher-driven method to a team of teachers who teach the same course, the same content, who share students across the grade level. And they're working together, and they're delving not into the questions of teaching, but rather into the questions of learning. Questions like, what is it we want our students to know and be able to do? In this English class, in this art one class, in this music class, in this third-grade math class, what do we want our students to know and be able to do? What are the very specific skills and concepts and dispositions that every student must acquire in order to be successful, not only this year, but when we send them up to the next level? And what do we want them to do? And how will we know if they've learned it? How will we work together to frequently monitor each and every student's attainment of those essential skills? And what if I taught it the best way I know how, and some of it still didn't learn? What are we going to do collectively and collaboratively to give those students more time and space to do it? What interventions will we have in place to give the kids who need it extra time to do it? And what about the kids that already know it? Are we extending and enriching their learning to help them move to the next level as well? These are the questions that drive the work of liberal professional learning. These are the questions that drive the work of liberal professional learning. These are the questions that drive the work of liberal professional learning.
Okay. I know that was a quick overview, but hopefully it gives you a sense of the work that teachers can do in a professional learning community. But the key thing, and I'll just reemphasize what the presenter was saying in that video, it changes the conversation from teaching to learning. And we're focused on learning and what kids know and be able to do. And when you have a guaranteed and viable curriculum like Witten Wisdom, which is the first time we've had something like that, once you have that guaranteed viable curriculum, then you can look at data, and you can really determine what students are learning, then you can have conversations about how they got there and share great ideas. So again, PLCs are the way, the means to an end for us. It's the way we can execute, looking at a new curriculum, it's the way we can adopt new technologies, it's the way teachers can work together about solving their own problems in their classrooms. Couple more goals just to go through with your social-emotional learning, so certainly that's on the plate probably of every district in the country right now, as far as looking and being able to help students who are maybe struggling in that arena. So we're going to have a goal this year to come up with some strategies to help students with that thing and be able to help our staff with that. So recommendations on curriculum adoption and lesson development. Amy's done a good job with the lead on that, and right now we have all our facilitators working in a PLC to help tackle this goal. And then the last goal I want to bring and articulate to you is looking at our graduation rate, and through an analysis of multiple data sources, Rycast, SAT scores, report cards, attendance, discipline records, create a specific strategic plan to steadily raise the graduation rate to 100%. So I want to share with you, we've already begun this work and already have a couple things that we're considering putting in place this year. One is developing a new CTE around computer technology that has courses in robotics and drone technology, and we feel that's another hands-on curriculum that maybe captures some kids and their interest and their excitement about being here in school. The second thing we're looking at is to run some night-school courses, and so for students who are struggling here in school and are getting here or need credit recovery, we're thinking about running some courses in the evening in language arts and mathematics to get kids caught up or to get the credits that they need. And then lastly, we're looking at creating an opportunity for students to accrue credits for work-study. So right now, work-study is a non-credit-bearing thing, but if we work in some capstone projects and some academic tasks that go along with that, we can start awarding credit, which many communities, many schools do. So those are three things we've talked about implementing so far, but a lot of work still to go on, a really comprehensive plan of raising the graduation rate. So I'll pause there. I think there are six great goals. I think they're goals that really can improve, and as I go back to one of my initial, original slides, excuse me, about, this is all about student achievement. These goals are centered around raising that rate and raising our students to the highest level of achievement possible, and I think these can get us there.
Dr. Larkin?
Yes, Mrs. Black.
So the first one of the alignment I find is so important because we have three separate elementary schools, and then they all come into the middle school. So we can't have some, not that they're all not good methods and materials, because they are, but they're different. And so when we have the Dunn Institute come in with a grant for a school, and they said they'd help, but then we said the most important thing is sharing best practices. You can't just keep it in your school, it has to be for all the kids. So that's really exciting that we're all going to be on that page. And then the bullying, of course, with the Tiverton Prevention Coalition, that's one of the pieces for the prevention. It's not just substance use and different things, it's that too. And a few years ago, we had the contest, Name It, Claim It, Stop It. And it's just what you said. You see it happening, you say you're being a bully, you're a bystander. You can't just stand there, you have to do something. And if enough bystanders are there, you know what's going to happen, the bully's not going to bother anyone because they don't do that. So there's a lot that went on with that. We had April Friends Day, instead of April Fool's Day, we played all these great songs, and it was like the best day in the, and we won an award for that that year. It was really exciting. So I'm glad we're doing that. And then we have the social-emotional learning of courses, and I hope it's blended into the class, each class, it's not like separate, right? It's like, do you know what I mean? It's part of the curriculum, and because it shouldn't be separate, it should be part of, this is how we act, this is who we are. The graduation rate, we talk about that a lot. In 2012, it was 83, 13, 86, 14, 91, 15, 93. Round the way up, there's no reason why we can't keep going. But it does include all those different pathways that we've always been fighting for. It's not just one straight line because everyone doesn't learn that way. That's not how kids show us who they are and what they know and what they want to become. The college fear has to be more college and career. We keep saying that, if they want to be a pipe fitter or a plumber or people like that. And I talked to them at the college, I said, "So you've got all your money, you're very wealthy now, you want to build a house, you're going to go out and jump on the backhoe? No, you're not. You're going to find out with the best person in the area that builds the most beautiful houses, you're going to call them, and they're going to come build you your house. And then you're going to have a huge party. And if something happens to your septic system, you're going to call the man with a little truck that's going to come down with a shovel and boots, and you're going to be so happy to see him. Everybody has a place, everybody has value, and that's what Tiverton High School's always been about. So I hope we can continue with that. Thank you."
Okay, thank you. This is great stuff. I would like to hold off on, I'm not sure we even need an approval since these are sort of superintendent things. I'd like to revisit this again at our next meeting so that Deb has an opportunity to see it all as well. And I don't think we received the slides in our backup, did we get those sent to us?
Or any kind of written plan?
We didn't get that.
No.
Our packet was very thin this week.
We can leave it at that.
I'll have it first thing tomorrow. I don't know why.
It's okay, we can have one of those. I want to put that in my binder.
So put it on the agenda for next time so that we can all sort of have Deb, we can chew on it a little bit and also have Deb have a chance to.
Absolutely. That'd be great, thank you very much.
Good information.
Yeah, no, these are, these are great, and I think they're appropriate and where we want to be going and sort of what we want to be doing. Thank you very much. So up to item 12C, update on professional learning. That's Ms. Donnelly Roach.
Thank you so much. It's a total pleasure to talk about professional learning. It's one of the best parts of the work I get to do for Tiverton. And over the course of, I would say, the last nine months or so, the Professional Learning Committee, which is composed of teachers from all of our schools and some administrators, has worked really hard to design professional learning that is systematic and ongoing. And that's a really lovely change. So thank you for all the support. And the professional learning, again, is deeper and more sustained, and it really will change the way we as adults learn and the way we teach. So I think it connects nicely to the presentation about the goals. We know we want to work on 21st century learning. I'll go quickly because Dr. Senkioni really addressed much of this. To the, to the right there on that slide are the four areas where we're really focusing on professional learning, and so I just wanted to give you a little details in terms of those four major pathways, if you will. They are deep and ongoing, and so our teachers are really going to be able to work together well to implement each of those. As you can see, they connect very closely to the goals. Witten Wisdom, pardon me, there's a little, it looks different on the screen than it does on my slide, so I apologize for the formatting there. But as you know, it's really a knowledge-building approach, so there is content embedded into the reading and writing, and it involves speaking and listening. And this is challenging for us because while all the teachers are really grateful to have a high-quality curriculum, it does involve some retooling and some just building of instructional practices. A lot of instructional practices are built in. So unlike other curriculums where they say this is what you should teach, there's also the how and the why, and it is quite a heavy lift right now. Our teachers are working very hard and prepping very hard, and it's unbelievable the amount of work they're putting in to make sure that they are teaching Witten Wisdom with the integrity and fidelity to how it was written. Witten Wisdom is complemented by Wilson Foundations, which you may have heard of. In terms of our district, we've been working toward implementation of that for three years. So I just wanted to let you know that, that we continue to have professional learning related to that, and that does dovetail perfectly with, with the needs of our kids. It's very hands-on, it's a systematic, highly structured, hands-on way to teach early literacy. Teachers and kids love it, and it works really well. And Witten Wisdom actually, again, is designed to complement that. So we're happy we already had that and very pleased that we're able to continue using that. And we also have Lexia Core 5, which is an online program, so that allows our students at elementary to use the iPads and Chromebooks and really have station rotation with a very high-quality literacy program. In terms of the professional learning, I have to echo what Dr. Senkioni said, that we've had some really great PDs so far. Some of it's been taught by experienced educators from across the country who've been implementing Witten Wisdom. Some of it has been taught by our own educators who took a risk and decided to plan all summer and roll out Witten Wisdom. And again, they did a great job, and our teachers are really excited. We have a total of eight professional learning sessions facilitated this year that all K-8 teachers will participate in, and those are half-days and full-days. Additionally, our K-8 administrators will have six full days of professional learning where the day before, the early release days, we will be having a coach walk us through each of the schools and observe the lessons and really kind of titrate how and what we're looking for, and make sure that we can best support the instruction going forward and make sure our teachers continue to have what they need to teach ELA really well. And then in addition to those sessions, which are for administrators, in the spring semester, we'll have six additional sessions where any teacher, leader, anyone from the district can participate in those walkthroughs, and again, find the strengths of our district and build upon them. And again, find the strengths of our district and build upon them. That will inform our professional learning going forward and also help the school improvement teams figure out what the goals need to be to really implement things well. Our teachers at K-1 and 2 have all had full-day trainings in the Wilson Program as we rolled that up, as the kids age up. And this year, all K-4 teachers have had, pre-K-4 teachers have had initial training in the Lexia Program. So there's an immense amount of support and training and really deep conversations going on about the use of all of these tools and how they fit together to support the kids. We also have a strand on restorative practices. So support professionals, that would be our school nurse teachers, our school psychologists, our school social workers, and our guidance counselors are all working together, and they have eight sessions this year. And you can see the difference from what we've done before, which we did our best to do, but now we've really built a systematic approach to professional learning. So restorative practices, as you may know, goes beyond just schools. People use them in all facets of our lives, particularly in justice systems. But we know that for our students, it's a way of building relationships and community and making sure that we have the highest quality practices so that the social connections are there and can support really rigorous academic conversations and environments where we trust one another and are willing to take risks with our learning. So we are working with the educated edge and have a great facilitator named Melissa Ugarte, who is working with all of those professionals over the course of the school year. And those professionals will leave with certification and the ability to then train the rest of us in how to really use restorative practice as well. So excited about that. In terms of the one-to-one initiative and just designing instruction that's a deeper approach to learning, our majority of our Tiverton Middle School teachers, of course, not our ELA teachers, but everyone else, all of our high school teachers and some of our elementary specialists not involved with English Language Arts are all working, and they have 10 sessions this year to work really hard on building a common understanding of evidence-based teaching practices in a blended model that uses technology and uses the best practice we already have to make sure that we are ready to go and ready to support our students' success in terms of academic collaboration, critical thinking, and just being challenged in general by using technology better. So that's a 10-session initiative, and we've partnered with EdTech Teacher. The gentleman there, whose name is Tom Driscoll, he also happens to be our neighbor. He works in Bristol Warren as the Director of Digital Learning. And so he's working with us, and we've gotten really good feedback from our teachers about that. Very excited to continue that. I could go on and on and on. Peter's already tied it together in terms of the connection to the professional learning communities, which really is the way we articulate this all out and make sure that regardless of what the content is that we're learning as educators, that we're sharing it, collaborating, and really thinking deeply about how it impacts kids. So it truly is an honor to be able to, you know, help design a program that works well for all of our kids and all of our teachers, and I think you'll see a huge impact on instruction and most importantly, on the learning.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Donnelly Roach?
Amy, do you think we could get a copy of the presentation as well?
Yeah, you didn't get that either, huh? We, I don't know why. They were there, I don't know why you didn't get them.
The restorative practices, is that something that you would fold into your social emotional curriculum?
Yes, exactly. It is really more about the adult's behavior, restorative practices, and making sure that we are as welcoming and open-minded and responsive as we can be, but it certainly connects in terms of how we speak to and about and with our children, our students.
Thank you. Anyone else? Great, thank you very much. So we are on item number 13, announcements, scheduled meetings, reports. So we have our agendas for the next couple meetings there.
And we're going to do the Alice thing and the Police Chief and Fire Chief soon?
I haven't listed it yet because we're still coordinating, but it's on my list of things to accomplish at a meeting. So as soon as I can coordinate it with those two individuals and we get the training schedule, we'll put it on an agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. So I think if we can just add again the vision and goals.
Yep, will do.
At this, with this, you know, I think that'll make a nice dovetail back into the school improvement plans.
Sure.
As well as an update on the new ELA curriculum.
Dr. Larkin?
Yes, Mrs. Black.
Dr. Senkione, may I ask you a question? I was going, reading through our interviews, and what was your superintendent's cabinet?
That's the central office administrator, so I meet with them every Monday morning. That would be Amy, David, the finance director, so Joe right now, Sarah, Sarah Craig, and Mr. Mendes. How could I forget Mr. Mendes?
Okay. All right, I just wondered, I didn't know what that was. Thank you.
What's that, Mrs., I missed, what was the question?
It was, and when I was reading through his bio, I read some wonderful commendations on him and his superintendent's cabinet, how he ran that and his other district, and I just didn't know who that would be. How would we begin that?
It's a Monday meeting to align our actions.
So it's not the school improvement team?
No, no, each school has their own school improvement team, sort of like my improvement team.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Could I ask that we perhaps get an update on early risers on the second meeting in October? Is that too soon?
Nope, not at all.
It's a good idea.
And please not forget spotlight on success on the first meeting of every month in case we have anyone to say what good things we're doing, please. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? So I'm going to ask for motion to move into executive session under Rhode Island General Law 42465A1 and 2. Director of Administration and Finance, Job Search, Superintendent's Goals and Evaluation, NEA Contract.
Make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.